This is trustee Huff, can you hear me?
Yes, we can trustee Huff, thank you. All right, I'd like to call a meeting to order. I would like to call this meeting to order and wish to acknowledge that our meeting is taking place on unceded Algonquin territory. I would like to thank the Algonquin Nation for hosting us on their land. So I'm assuming that everyone has a copy of the agenda and I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda. Trustee Lyra.
I'd like to move to approve the agenda with an amendment that we move 7.2 up to just after delegations at the request of the student trustees.
All right, we have a motion to move 7.2 up. Just a minute here. Move item 7.2 to where trustee Lyra?
Just after 5.1.
Just after 5.1. So that would mean putting it after, right after the delegations?
That's correct.
All right. So like, let's have a, we have a, is that friendly? I see no objections to it. Therefore, let's have a vote on the agenda as, let's call the question on the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Approved. All right, then moving on, briefing from the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a number of things to speak about tonight. First of all, it's kindergarten registration week this week. We have great kindergarten programs in our elementary schools and we are encouraging parents to participate in information sessions that are being held in our schools all across the city. It's a great time to find out more about the school and the programs that are offered and all kinds of details that every parent wants to know. Parents can register their child at any time, but if you can register early, that is always a help to us in projecting our numbers. Please visit our website for details. Secondly, we are seeking candidates to apply for the position of public school trustee to represent Zone 10 Somerset Kitchessipi. Interested candidates can visit the OCDSB website for more information on the position and how to apply. Signed applications must be received no later than noon on Friday, the 31st of January. In preparation for the 2020 Ontario budget, the provincial government is seeking public participation in consultations until the 11th of February 2020. There are three ways to share your views and ideas with the Government of Ontario. First of all, you can submit feedback through their online survey. You can attend an in-person session, they're holding those throughout the province, or you may send a written submission by email or letter mail. More information is available on the district website That's most full, so probably best to look it up on the website. Next, we have made a decision to reschedule our February Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting, which had been scheduled for Monday, the 3rd of February. We have concluded that it will be better to hold it on Tuesday, the 4th of February 2020, following our regular Committee of the Whole Public Session. In terms of the labor situation, both EFL and OSSTF have now held one-day walkouts which have closed schools across our districts. Based on information provided by OSSTF, we do not expect any additional walkouts that are affect, will affect secondary schools during the secondary school exam period. However, both federations have escalated their work to rule withdrawals of service which will have an impact on elementary and secondary schools. More information can be found on our website. And finally, in this regard, a decision has been made that because of these service withdrawals, the OCDSB will not be participating in the January EQAO Grade 9 Math Assessments. The OCDSB will await further direction from the Ministry of Education regarding the test for Semester 1 students. And finally, to close, I would like to take a moment to reflect on the devastating tragedy of Flight 752, which occurred earlier this month. This terrible event brought Canadians together in grief as we learned about those lost, including members of our own OCDSB community. On behalf of the board, I would like to extend our sincere condolences to the family and friends of those who died. May you find solace in the memory of your loved ones. We remain hopeful for a more peaceful world where tragedies like this can be avoided. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the chair? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item four, briefing from the director, and tonight we have Associate Director Reynolds.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of items. On Thursday, January 30th, we will be holding an OCDSB Early Learning Career Fair at Rockcliffe Public School. Early childhood educators and early learning assistants are encouraged to come and learn about our programs and what it's like to work for the OCDSB. Participants can bring their resume and take part in onsite interviews. Further details are available on our website. And lastly, registration for the Winter 2020 Night School Session has started. Classes run from February 20th to May 26th. Interested students can visit our website for more information about registration and a listing of courses that are available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the director's briefing? Seeing none, let's move on to item number five, which is delegations, and we have one two-minute delegation signed up. And if Ms. Reece could come up to the... Just, just take a seat and speak into the mic, and when you're ready, just push the button so the little red ring comes on, and you'll have up to two minutes to speak, followed by up to three questions of clarification from trustees if they wish to learn a little bit more. Okay? All right.
Hi, everybody. My name is Chow Reece, and thank you for your trustees and to be able to let me to speak to you all. I thank you for the transparency of the board, and I'm able to see all the information of the meeting. I'm grateful for that. The reason I'm here today is because of my daughter, Emma Reece, who is on Grade 5 in Huntley Centennial in Carp. We are new to Ottawa. We moved from Simcoe due to my husband's work in military. Over in Simcoe, Emma has been officially identified as gifted and talented. And because of the... And she also has been attending to a gifted and talented special class when we were in Simcoe. So when we moved here in August 2019, she has started a school in Carp. But she's a bit unsatisfied with her current provisions because she just find a little bit bored and not be able to reach her potential. Ever since we've been reached out to the school board and asking for that her official test be recognized by Ottawa and Carlton District School Board, but we have been told that her officially identified test by Simcoe is not accepted by Ottawa District School Board. She's been suggested to take another test. And I discussed that with Emma, and she was under enormous stress for several reasons. First of all, we are very new to Ottawa. She is very new to the school, to her classmates. And when she took the test, she, in Simcoe, she took it with her classmates and had no stress. She didn't know what she was taking, and she did very well. She scored 144 out of 150, which is 1 or 2% of the population could achieve that score. But here, she's been told...
Thank you very much. Could you wrap it up, please?
Pardon?
Finish up, please. You had two minutes, right?
Yeah, time's up, okay. Yeah, so we want the school board to be able to consider the possibility to make bridge recognitions or equivalent recognitions of other tests officially identified by other school boards. Especially families like us, as a military family, we feel like we'd be disadvantaged because we moved from school board to another one, that a school board doesn't recognize the test we already be identified.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reece. We do have one question from trustee Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Reece. We have spoken and we have, and I've seen your correspondence to our staff. In terms of the programming that was available to your daughter in Simcoe, was it different from what is available at Huntley Centennial now?
It is, yeah, was different. She was, because she was selected and went to a special gifted class. So she was in a special class with other identified students. So the curriculum provision was very different. And the teacher, the method of teaching was very different as well. But now she's in a normal class. But the school gave her a tailor-made provision that she had 50% of French and 50% of English. But she's behind, she, when she was in Simcoe, she only had 5% of French provision. Now she has to catch up to 50% provision of French, which she's behind a big time. But in another 50% of the English provision, she's way ahead. So there's an imbalance in her current provision, and it doesn't stretch her potential.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that for us this evening. I hope that we will be able to have further dialogue with staff to find a solution.
Thank you so much.
And thank you very much for your delegation.
Thank you.
Oh, trustee Schwartz, did you have a question?
Yeah, actually, and it's directed at staff, so just the delegate, and thank you for your delegation. The delegate raised, I think, a question...
So trustee Schwartz is usually a question of clarification for the...
So it's a question of clarification for staff. So when the delegate was suggesting that the testing between boards isn't accepted, if we could just get clarification on what that actually means? Do we just administer different tests in different boards for identification of gifted or other special needs? I'm just curious on that point.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'd have to ask Superintendent Simmons if he can comment. I don't know if we have blanket policies pertaining to assessments undertaken by different districts.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. There is no requirement across the province for districts to have the same programs and services to support students with special education needs. When it comes to assessments, we would be typically looking for assessments that have used Canadian norms. And we would be looking for a recency of assessment. So without speaking to the particulars of this particular situation, where there are opportunities for us to use equally valid tests using Canadian norms, those are the ones that we would go for rather than using US norms to make that determination.
Thank you, that does help to clarify.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Reece, for your delegation. So moving on, we amended the agenda to, for the sake of the student trustees and the student senators to talk about item 7.2, Report 20-011, Supporting Indigenous Learners at the OCDSB. And so I'm going to call upon Associate Director Reynolds to introduce the item.
Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to see Superintendent Baker arrive at the table. I know she'll introduce her companion who will be presenting this report.
Thank you and good evening. Through you, Mr. Chair. You have before you the annual report on supporting Indigenous learners at the OCDSB for last year, the year 2018, 2019. And here with me is Vice Principal Jody Alexander. And I would just like to publicly acknowledge the work that she has conducted on this report and that of the team who has been working tirelessly in supporting our First Nations, Métis and Inuit students. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jody, who will go ahead and walk you briefly through the report, and then we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Que, Anisego, Jody Alexander, Nidhishakas, Pikwaknagon and Dunjaba. Good evening, everyone. Jody Alexander, I'm Algonquin from Pikwaknagon and the Vice Principal for Indigenous Education with the board. In introducing this report tonight, I just wanted to bring forward the fact that we are, as a board, still on a continuum of learning and that we have various staff across the district that are in different areas of their learning. We have people who are still at an awareness phase. We have people who are engaging in the work with learning, the Indigenous Education Learning Team, and also with our community partners. And then we also have people that are starting to implement Indigenous pedagogy in their everyday. So acknowledging that and the fact that everyone's on a different learning journey, we are supporting as best we can in whatever way we can. And I also want to acknowledge the team. The Indigenous Education Learning Team is one of, I would say, the best in the province. We're so lucky that we have the individuals we have. We have an all-Indigenous team, so it's really fantastic. And I am so pleased to come and work with them every day. Together with the team, we also have fabulous community partnerships in the OCDSB, working with various students. They have a very loud voice, and we try to listen to them as often as we can, and the community members as well. Some of the highlights that you'll notice in the report, the team growth from last year where we were able to include a second student support coordinator, has made a great impact. And if you have a look at, I believe it's on Folio 67, you can look at the comparative data when we had only one student support and re-engagement coordinator working with us compared to adding that second person. And when Josh joined the team, he began in January. So just this increase alone shows that the incredible work that's been happening. Also, really want to highlight the Indigenous Education Advisory Council. We have been working with the various community partners and parents, and that has been going incredibly well. That's been a wonderful addition. And I would just also want to say that we, I have personally noticed that we have been building capacity across the district. We have a lot of people asking us to, for our assistance in supporting students and supporting staff. So that's really, those are some of the highlights that I've noticed. And that, and in the report also, I talked about the work that we've done with student success. So cross-departmentally, we've done some work as well. So really proud of the work that we've done. And I think that's all I have for now. I'm sure you'll have questions for us.
Trustee Campbell?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work and the report. Looking at some of the achievement highlights page, and I guess what I was wondering is, do you have a sense? I noticed there's effectively a reported dip for Grade 6 in both, I guess, math and reading. Reading and writing assessments for Indigenous students identifying as Indigenous. But at least in math, it's not maybe as clear in reading and writing. The scores generally are pretty good compared to district averages for both Grade 3 and Grade 9. So there's a sort of like dip at Grade 6. And again, for reading and writing, scores aren't too bad for Grade 3 dip at Grade 6. So I guess what I'm wondering is, do you have a sense whether this is a cohort question or there's something more chronic and systemic at the Grade 6 level for Indigenous students? Or do we just not know? And then I have one other question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll speak to this one. I think there are a couple of things to notice. One of them is we've included four years of data here, so I think it's important to notice the trends. Grade 6 overall, regardless of the cohort that's being represented, we know we have some work to do, and this would be no exception. It drops off sharply in this year, and that could very well be a cohort factor. The N is so small that we're likely, we do see wide variations year to year in the EQAO results. Having said that, we are looking at delving into some of the perceptual data specifically for Indigenous students to see if that can give us a clue of how they're feeling in terms of their mathematics agency.
That's helpful, and we'll see what comes of that. It's an interesting topic. It's important, obviously. My second question, I guess, is, it says in the report, talks about the potential being offered by the, I guess, a ministry-led program to bring together, I'm missing the exact text, so you'll have to figure what I'm saying for my vague reference here, I think. But that the ministry has established a program to certify educators in Indigenous language teaching, I guess. And the report suggests that there may be potential for Nukhtutu language training coming out of that, as I understand, which is great. Now, that may be credit, or is it a Saturday kind of language program? And is it only for Nukhtutu, not Algonquin or other languages? And is there a difference between credit? We may need licensed educators for credit courses, but do we need that for Saturday programming, which also has a cultural element? So I guess I'd just like to, maybe some comments on that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll begin, and then if Vice Principal Alexander has further comments, she can. So this elder circle is an Inuit elder circle, and it's the first established in the province. Their mandate is to receive applications for language, Inuit language, Nukhtutu-speaking speakers, which they would then put forward, should they approve, to the Ontario College of Teachers for Certification to Teach Nukhtutu. And in so doing, that allows us to have some options available to us. One is to offer it for credit at the secondary level. But another might be to consider what a core elementary program might look like, should we have the numbers to do so. The Saturday languages program is a little bit different. It's offered through continuing education, and those teachers don't necessarily have to have OCT. But they are vetted through that process through continuing education. But certainly, there's an opportunity there as well for that language to be offered. The next step to consider is, once we have this up and going, and it's a success, and it's being supported, it's a joint effort between us and the Ottawa Catholic Board, that we would then look to potentially facilitating and establishing a similar Algonquin circle where there could be a similar vetting of language speakers who could then be doing, excuse me, I have a cold, providing that service for us in the school system.
That's great to know, and hopefully, these things come to pass. I will note, and so hopefully, and this is more for school day kinds of concerns, credit or core curriculum changes or whatever, as I think is you suggested. In terms of the Saturday program, though, when I went to our website, it says sort of, I can't remember the title, but it's international and Indigenous languages or something like that. But there are no Indigenous languages. I guess what I'm wondering is, if we don't require certified teachers for the Saturday programs, I guess what I'm wondering is, what is, what's the issue? No demand, no supply? I guess, I mean, since there is an important cultural component to these things, you would think that it would be something important for us to be able to offer if we want to support Indigenous communities in Ottawa area, so.
So we have been discussing with continuing education the possibility of having some Indigenous language programs run on the Saturday programming. At the moment, the barrier would be finding someone to offer that. And, yeah, that's the main barrier.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. Trustee Schwartz?
Thanks. One of my questions was answered. The other question I had was back to the achievement highlights. It's not so much in the report, but based on the professional development session that we did last week, there was a couple data points that I found really quite interesting that I don't see reflected kind of in this report. Now, I don't know whether those data points were real or whether they were just to get conversation flowing last week. So my question really was, and what was quite interesting in the data that was presented last week was it was broken down by Indigenous students and ELL and Spec Ed kids and so forth in French immersion, single track, French immersion dual track. And there were some really interesting sort of data points in that which was demonstrating that, at least on EQAO scores, Indigenous students who were... that, at least on EQAO scores, Indigenous students who were in single-track French immersion seemed to have higher scores than within the other. So if you looked across, it was begging questions of if we were to segment this data a little bit further, would we potentially see additional trends that, I think getting back to this language education question, where the achievement is different if they're in a different programming area? And I think it was just, so I'm just, I was reflecting on that further, and it would be interesting to see potentially in this report, that kind of segmentation if possible, because I think it could tell us a bit more about, is there additional language pieces that, is there something in that to help with achievement?
And I'm going to ask Executive Officer Drew to maybe take the, make the first comment, and then we can see if Superintendent Baker has anything to add.
I think the data we used last week was real data, but I think one of the things you have to be cautious about is, you're talking about small numbers. So you could in fact see that Indigenous students are outperforming other students in the class. That can vary significantly depending on the size of the class, the number of students, et cetera. And so that's one of our challenges with this particular dataset, is how small the number of students is, particularly when you break it down by school or by program. And so that can create serious fluctuations in the data.
Okay, I can appreciate that. I think it was just, those questions were brewing in my mind as I was looking at that data to say, is there something telling here that we should potentially be further exploring? And to Trustee Campbell's questions around, you know, Indigenous language, perhaps there's a piece in that, that from learning a second language, and frankly, a traditional language may be helpful for that grouping of students to advance further in other subject matters. So it's just, and again, it's a research question, not, I don't think I'm articulating it that well, but I think you understand kind of the point that I'm trying to make. So that was just, thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Trustee Schwartz. Trustee Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions. First of all, I would appreciate hearing a little more about the Original Voices group and its meetings, and whether or not it includes students from all of our schools potentially, or it's mostly secondary, and is it really citywide? And how is it working generally? How is it being received? And is it growing?
So I can make some attempts to answer this question and look to Trustee Gann about to help me out. So the Original Voices Youth Council is led by Chris Moasigie and Josh Lewis, and they have made every attempt to engage as many secondary students as possible across the district. This year, they have started to go to secondary sites across the district. So they were at Longfields last night, and they've really tried to engage more students and have them have their input into various topics. And Gann about, do you have anything to add?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I can speak a little bit to the Original Voices Youth Council. I've been, I wouldn't say a full member, but I go when I can, probably since its creation last year. And I can say positively, there has been growth. But one of the things that I think Indigenous youth really appreciate about this is that it's not strict, there is no strict membership. You come when you can, and don't worry about it if you can't come. That's combined with the fact that Chris and Josh do offer taxi chits, so it doesn't matter where you are in the city, you can usually get there with the exception of homework or work outside of school hours. In addition to that, I know that we have community partners that come every meeting and will share different resources that are going on. And I actually know two or three friends who are members of it that are now applying to Carleton through the Enriched Indigenous Support Program and intend on pursuing a degree that they wouldn't have known existed without this group existing. So just by that, I think getting three students to go to university who wouldn't have beforehand is a huge measure of success. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. My second question is, in some ways, probably a bit pickier, and that is in terms of the numbers of students who have self-identified at this point. We don't seem to talk about breaking out different groups among the Indigenous students who attend our schools. But certainly, having attended one of the Indigenous Advisory, Education Advisory Council meetings last fall, I certainly heard the concern that not all Indigenous students have everything in common, and that we need to find ways as well of recognizing the differences that exist, because it is an extremely diverse population of its own, on its own. So what are we doing to make sure that we don't lump everybody together into the same category and fail to recognize that there are, that there is a huge diversity?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll start, but I know that my partner here has plenty to say on that. Vice Principal Alexander spoke about the difference of starting with awareness and then moving into embedding and learning. And as a district, I would say we're just beginning that journey. In reports, we tend to have clusters of cohorts where the disaggregation doesn't happen and the differences haven't risen. But the community has made it very clear that it's so important for all of us to recognize that there are so many various peoples who live here in Ottawa, and it's incumbent upon us to find out who they are and learn from each and every one, because they're all different, just as all of us are and where we come from. And so that's part of the learning process for sure. There has also been discussion through some of our events, such as the Indigenous Youth Symposium, that that's a venue where people can learn with and from and focus on highlighting some of the differences and unique characteristics of certain cultures. So that is some major work that we have to do, and even in our thinking and discussing. There are so many different ways of knowing and ways of being that we need to learn, as well as the broader context of Canada as a whole. We have many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples here who come from all across the country, have very different lived experiences from one another and from the community of Ottawa. And so to your point, it's important that we start to embed those, not only in our events and in our professional learning, but also through the curriculum. And that has been starting as the ministry is unfolding some of the revised curriculum, but we still have a long way to go. And I don't know if you want to add.
I can just add as well, we, as the Indigenous Education Team, thinking and planning the Youth Symposium, for example, we were very intentional on ensuring that we had community partners from the Inuit community, from the Métis community, and from First Nation communities, so that we want to make sure that any student who is attending feels that connection in some way, and maybe does learning together about other cultures as well. But one of the really successful things that we've been able to do is work together with the community partners, with Inukatagi, with Wabano, with Métis Nation of Ontario. So the Indigenous Education Team has done some work there. And in our attempts to deliver professional learning to teachers and staff, we've made it part of our presentation to ensure that we are making sure that we're honoring the identities of various students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Campbell?
Thank you. I meant to ask this question earlier, but my time ran out earlier in any event. It's a related question with respect to, but more on the funding aspect for language programming. So I noted at the bottom of Folio 71, I just like, I guess, a clarification, first of all, it says in part, though we qualify for Native Studies and per pupil allocations, as we do not currently offer Native language programming, as such, we do not receive funds through allocation. So if I understand that effectively, we're leaving possible grant money on the table because we don't offer that programming. But then it goes on to say, funding is used to offer Native Studies courses in secondary schools, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not really sure how I read these two sentences together. And also, if I get maybe a ballpark idea of the funding effectively left fallow that we're not receiving.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is the rationale behind, and the impetus behind, the establishing of the Inuit elder circle. So the offering of the languages, of course, one of the issues is that, for how many hundreds of years have languages been suppressed? And so finding Native languages speakers who, that the community deems competent enough to teach it, is a really important part of the process. And so the establishment of this Inuit elder circle, where they can be encouraging people who have that facility to come forward and then be able to teach it, is a huge and hugely important endeavor across this land. And our ability and capability as a province to now be able to offer that through OCT-qualified language speaker will stand us in good stead. So as I said, this is the first of its kind in the province for establishing this partnership with Ontario College of Teachers, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to establish some teachers so that we can start implementing some of these programs and access these funds for students.
Thank you. That's helpful. But I guess what I'm, sorry, perhaps wasn't as clear as it could have been. The second sentence suggests that funding is used to offer Native Studies courses in secondary schools, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's not, in a sense, the missing funding, that's other funding. So is that another specially targeted grant line? Or is that from general funds? And in terms of the targeted grant line, we're not able to take advantage of, what kinds of dollars are we looking at?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If you can turn to Folio 79, it's outlined in more specificity there. They are two different line items, Native Studies and Native Languages, as you'll see. Native Studies courses generate funds through the ministry for districts, and the amount for this year is outlined here. And then those funds, unlike some of the others, are unsweatered. So some of those funds go directly to supporting the Native Studies courses and the resources required in the professional learning. But then, some of it is then combined with all the other non-sweatered funds to go back into supporting all students' needs in the pupil foundation, governance facilities.
And perhaps if I could add on to that, it's hard to estimate what dollars we're talking about, because I believe it's per pupil, so it depends on uptake. It's not capped. So as people, if we were able to offer, as pupil interest would grow, funding would seemingly be provided to offset the costs incurred.
Without dragging this out, basically presumably there's some kind of a max allocation based on a number of identified students in the district or something, and then it's basically languages course uptake up to that number, or something like that? We don't know.
I think, please feel free to add, I think, also, I believe non-Indigenous students are allowed to learn the language, and so it's actually, I don't believe that it is capped. If we had all 70,000 students participating in a language course, then there would be funding to help support that.
That'd be a lot of money. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you. You sort of got at one of the questions I was going to ask about funding, and I know that we've talked before about the connection with class averages. And I know that we're all very concerned about how class averages may be impacted based on the political situation we're dealing with now. So I don't know whether class averages would play into the funding coming forward if these courses were small, and how that might impact on other classes that might be run or not. So that's one thing to think about. But the question I have is from Folio 71, Second Last Bullet, which talks about continuing to phase in the NBE 3U, et cetera, courses. And I'm just wondering if that's a broad goal, or if there's a specific plan or schedule that can be shared?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is a plan that ultimately we will be full implementation of the NBE English at grade 11. And the timeline for that, we have 16 out of 24 secondary sites who are full implementation now. We have signals from a couple of others that they may be heading that way next year. But our plan is to be continuing to support those sites who are not fully implemented but are only offering in some streams for full implementation with a goal of September 2021, depending on what levels of support they may require. But that would be our goal.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lyra?
Because this is a small community, and because there are courses offered on Saturdays, what work has been done to reach out to our co-terminus boards to get those students engaged in learning their language or learning a language?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our languages, our language program, they have one as well. We partner with them and work with them quite often on several things, and we come together as the region for many of the events and supports that we do together. But what I would say is that we are in partnership, for example, with the Inuit elder circle process. And so our ability and theirs to be able to offer a languages program in Inuktitut is contingent on the establishing of that elder circle, and we are in partnership with them on that.
My question was, once this program is up and running, what efforts are going to be made to reach out to students in the co-terminus boards to make sure that they have access to this program?
Through you, Mr. Chair. They will be reaching out to their own students with access to the same language speakers that are certified through the Ontario College of Teachers. So they would have, reaching out to their community and their school population to be offering language courses to them through their district.
Student, Trustee Gania?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I have one quick question on a topic that I noticed wasn't mentioned too much in the report, and Trustee Lyra saying the word "co-terminus" spurred it, because I completely forgot it last Thursday. But it touches on the idea with working other boards and connecting Indigenous youth with Indigenous youth. I think we can all agree that community is a very central ideology to a lot of us. And I know that at previous events, specifically the IYS, I'm not sure about two years ago, but, or 20, in 2018, I'm not sure about, but in 20, no, sorry, in 2018, I'm not sure about. In 2019, I know that we had invited students from a somewhat close board to ours. And that was a very unique and interesting opportunity for students on both sides. I know that friends of mine still do talk to students from that board. So if there are no next steps at this point, that's completely fine. But if there are any steps coming forward to continue to work with other boards within our region and continuing to grow that community... and continuing to grow that community past just the city limits of Ottawa, what are they? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll just respond to that. Prior to this, well, the last two years, we would often meet two or three times with our regional partners in Indigenous education. The provincial meeting still occurs, but it's the only one that does. But what that opportunity offered was more working together to create times and spaces where we could partner on many initiatives. There have also been some reductions in the Indigenous staff, I believe, at our co-terminus board, which has made the work challenging. But nevertheless, we recognize the importance of bringing community together. And so I think your point is well taken, and we can certainly reach out to see if there are similar initiatives in line and see what opportunities there might be.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I could just add that you're correct, Ganabad. We had reached out to Pickwacknagon and Kitigunzeby and invited them both to the Indigenous Youth Symposium. They both came. We also have had plans, and I believe that Pickwacknagon came to our Indigenous Trades Event that was held for elementary students. And we have, we have plans to continue that. In addition, at this year's Youth Symposium, we had guests come from Prince Edward County, Hastings, Prince Edward County, and, you know, wondering if there's some way that we can work with them as well.
So thank you very much, trustees, and thank you, Superintendent Baker.
Can I be put on the list of when?
Certainly, go ahead, trustee Huff. Go ahead, trustee Huff.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, as the trustee, you have the great honor of sitting with these fine folks in the Indigenous Education Advisory Council. I'd just like to bring to the attention of my colleagues the fine work and the incredible commitment and passion that each and every one of the members of that team bring to their students and carry into each and every meeting to share with us the work that they're doing, the successes that they're having. And I feel very, very proud of the work that this board is doing and the commitment that we're making to this group of students. I think that we will see successes grow one after another as this program continues to expand. And I would also like to thank my colleagues tonight for their very interesting and connected comments about the report. I think the report was very fulsome and very well done, and I appreciated the effort that went into it. But I just wanted to give a shout out to all involved.
Thank you very much, trustee Huff, and thank you very much, superintendent Baker, and thank you very much, Vice Principal Alexander, for your presentation. So moving on to item 6.1, Matters for Action, Report 20-009, Facilities Renewal Program and School Conditions Improvement, 2019-2020 Project Plan. I'd like to call upon Associate Director Reynolds to introduce the item.
Great, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to welcome at the table the manager of facilities, Dan Bradley, along with Dave LaSalle, supervisor and designer construction. You'll see that manager Ostafa Chuck is there, but we respectfully requested her presence be largely ignored. Manager of facilities, Dan Bradley, will present the report along with Mr. LaSalle and will be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Dan Bradley, manager of facilities for the board. So the report in front of you outlines a project implementation plan for the school renewal and SCI funding for the 2019-2020 school year. Approximately 80% of our buildings are greater than 20 years old, and the ministry continues to provide increased funding through the School Condition Improvement Funding Program to support the renewal of our building infrastructure. The 2019-2020 school year SCI allocation is approximately $51 million with a $25 million carryforward from last year. FRP is about $18.5 million, and that includes about $3 million in temporary accommodation funding and $15.5 million in school renewal allocation funding. So that's a combined total of approximately $95 million for the 2019-2020 school year. I put together a bit of a PowerPoint presentation to cover off some of the areas we do work in. So the major categories include, well, this is a bit of a breakdown here, just, it's within the report of where we're spending each of the dollars. So electrical power, about $9 million. Interior fit up. The interior category covers off areas like renovations, but science labs and learning commons are a major portion of that interior work. The next couple of years, we have some significant science lab upgrades ongoing. AY Jackson, Colonel Byan, I believe Canterbury. Next is mechanical infrastructure upgrade for about $10 million. Roofing, $13. Site and paving is a little bit lower. The way that the ministry has broken up the funding is 70% is allocated towards restricted items, which include roofing, mechanical, electrical windows. And the 30% can be allocated to areas such as site paving, miscellaneous upgrades, painting, that kind of thing. And then multi-year and contingency plans. We have a bunch of programs put in place that we've allocated funding, stuff like steam to hot water conversions and some acoustic treatments. We've allocated funding in those areas and continue to do research about the implementation of those programs. So you will see in future reports how we are going to implement the funds in those categories. So if we just go through, so science lab refurbishment, like I said, is a big one. So this is just an example of an upgrade of one of our sites. So about one to two, next year we're doing three schools, and they typically happen over multi-year just because of the invasive nature of the work. It is too much work for us to complete within the summer, six to seven week period. So typically you're looking at a July to January kind of implementation for each phase. And there's typically multiple phases for each project. Learning commons upgrades, a few of these have happened throughout the district. We're still reviewing these. We've had some significant upgrades in Maryville, Gloucester, Sarawak, Borden, for example. Barrier-free unit washroom installation. On an average, we do three to five new barrier-free or unit washroom installations in facilities. So these provide dignified washroom facilities for students and staff with special needs. Doors, windows, and masonry. So these cover off window replacement, door replacement, curtain wall. So really add to the curb appeal we'll save to the buildings. Ashwell paving, self-explanatory. Mechanical upgrades. So this mainly includes boilers, domesticated water, rooftop units, air handlers, plumbing fixture replacement, which are essential in the daily operations of our buildings. Roof replacements also self-explanatory. We do about 10 to 15 roof replacements annually. They are projects that are easy to design and roll out, so that's why you'll see an increase typically annually in roofing projects. Electrical lighting upgrades, so major electrical infrastructure. One we've been targeting in the last probably 10 years is major lighting retrofits. In the last five years is fluorescent to LED lighting upgrades, which offer an increased performance in lighting and also energy efficiency. That's all we have.
Thank you very much. And we have a small speakers list. Start with trustee Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I was attracted to a couple of things in the report, and one of these was the backlog in terms of our facilities conditions and that kind of thing. And I guess my first question, if I may, is more of a question of clarification. On Folio 5, it suggests backlog of renewal projects can use to be in excess of $528 million to the learning, permanent learning facilities, that's, I guess, non-portables. And accessibility and program backlog adds $107 million, so $635 million. I understand accessibility. What is the program backlog? It's something different from accessibility, or is that the accessibility program? Or I'm not quite, are we talking two different things or one thing that adds to the $107 million?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. I'll have to get some more details on the program requirements. But I believe that would be something like science labs or specific program-related facilities that would support programs. So it could be, again, I'll have to get some details, but I believe it could be auto shops, that kind of thing.
That makes sense. Thank you very much. So let's call it $635 million then. At our current work spend rate, basically, we carried forward $25 million last year, effectively proposing to carry forward another 25, the same $25 million into the forthcoming year. And it says in the report, and it is in the part of the oral introduction as well, we have narrow time period which get things done. There are capacity issues of one kind or another. So effectively, as I understand the report, practically speaking, this is all we can spend in a weird way. So if that's the case, at this rate of spending, because our facilities continue to age, theoretically, how long would it be to erase this backlog? Or are we making any movement on the backlog? Is a, it's sort of a general question.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. At the current pace, so the reason there's care for it typically is because there is a limitation of resources, not only within the board, within the city, to implement the program. So we found that typically we can execute anywhere from $30 to $50 million comfortably through a summer construction period. With that investment in our buildings, we kind of maintain neutral. So we're no longer, we don't see we're increasing our backlog, but we're not really digging into it that much. So we'd, I'd have to do a further analysis exactly where we sit, but in general, that's kind of how it works. And that's kind of consistent with other boards across the province.
Thank you very much. So in a sense, even if the province threw money at us to erase our backlog, we wouldn't be able to use it fundamentally.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, that's correct. And purely because the implementation would just be too difficult, unrealistic.
Thank you very much for that. I have, those are all my serious questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Campbell, trustee Schwartz. And would you care to move the motion, perhaps?
That was my plan. So yes, I would like to move the motion, and I do have some questions, but I will not require an introduction. So can I go to my questions? So thank you to trustee Campbell for asking my question related to the backlog. I guess the question on the backlog, if the province did put in additional money and we can't spend it because it's more that we don't have the internal staff or there's simply not enough contractors available. If there were more contractors available, we could actually get the work done. Is that roughly where we're at? So there's a couple areas in here that I, that just were interesting. One, you were talking about the LED lighting. Is there a reason we've not actually looked for additional funds to offset some of the costs related to LED lighting? Like there's federal programs, for example. Can we not access some of those funds?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. We do access some of the rebate funding programs through the city and through Hydro Ottawa. And it's not that we were looking for additional funding to support that program. We do, it's just, like I said, the implementation of the program does take a lot of resource and time. So we have put together a plan that is reasonable to execute through the summer. So I, but we do, we do try to explore all those avenues.
Okay, thank you. That's actually helpful to understand. And the solar program, so, you know, with four additional installations, with the FIT program essentially now gone in the province, this is essentially fully costed or fully expensed by the board. So we're not getting a rebate any longer from the province. Is that accurate?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, we're not, these installations are fully supported by the board.
So what's the payback period for these? Because under the FIT program previously, the payback was a much shorter period. What is roughly what the payback period would be for the installation of these?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. I'll have to pull that information back through Energy Management Department. I don't want to provide the numbers if they're not correct. But these are net metering systems, so they're different from the FIT and the microFIT programs, which were basically purely, you install them, you receive a payment from Ontario Hydro. These net metering systems, as we produce energy, the building, it's used by the building. Anything we don't use, we sell back to the grid. So there is a bit of an income from that. But in general, at times of peak productions in the summer when we need air conditioning cooling, so generally speaking, our buildings consume the majority of what we produce.
Okay, the reason I'm asking about the payback is I think if, you know, if we're looking to encourage the province to potentially invest again in programs like that, understanding what the original payback period was versus what it might be now, and I understand on the net metering side. But that could be helpful, I think, if that's an area we would want to advocate on. Not suggesting we would, but certainly for personally, that would be helpful information. So I've moved it, and I think we should support this. It's important that we continue to invest in our, in our buildings and facilities. So thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Lara.
So I've got a couple of questions. My first question is about the science lab upgrades. I presume that's predominantly secondary labs. I'm seeing some nodding. So I'm wondering if you're still installing natural gas lines for Bunsen burners in high school or secondary level labs?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, we are. It is, it is part of the infrastructure for the science labs, for the renovations.
Okay. So I think that's good. I think it's really important that we expose young people to Bunsen burners, which are, I'm a chemist. There's a big difference between a Bunsen burner and a heating mantle. And I think it's important that we continue to let high school students use Bunsen burners like they do in research and in industry. My next question is about, I counted four boiler replacements. Can you give me more information about the boilers that we are replacing and what we are replacing them with?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. So generally speaking, the boiler replacements come to be just due to life cycle. And in general, they'd be an atmospheric type boiler, which is efficiency of anywhere from 70 to 80%. And we typically now replace them with condensing boilers, which are typically above 85 to 95% efficiency. So regardless of the system, with today's technology, generally speaking, we can tune the boilers to match any kind of system that's within our district.
My question was, what, are they natural gas boilers? Are they coal boiler? Like what sort of, what's the heat production method?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. They're natural gas.
What non-carbon-based alternatives exist for boilers that would be able to slot into our schools?
There are some boilers produce, would use a pellet-type fuel, but we haven't really looked at it, and it isn't widely spread across the province or in our geographical area.
Are there not electric boilers?
There are electric boilers, yes.
So what would the cost differential be between an electric boiler and a natural gas boiler?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. We haven't installed an electric boiler in I don't know how many years, so I'm not sure the cost and the difference in operational cost for that kind of installation.
Could you give us a ballpark? Are we talking millions? Are we talking hundreds? Are we talking?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not sure. I couldn't, I have no idea at this point.
The reason I ask is I think it's incumbent on us as a school board to install boilers long-term, because these things last, like you mentioned, for years and years and years, that aren't based on the burning of fossil fuels. And I'd like to make an amendment that we look at the alternatives to the boilers that we're installing and see what kinds of, what kinds of alternatives we could have, what we could do. But I don't think I can make that amendment without that kind of information. I'm expecting this will come back to us at board, and I'm hoping that we can get that kind of information so that we can make an informed decision about being able to spend some of our surplus on long-term sustainable boilers.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair, you're kind of asking us to undertake a bit of a research project. I'm not overly familiar, and I can consult with the manager and the CFO after this meeting to see if there are electric boilers commonly in use or purchased currently in education settings. The specifications required for each building, each system, I mean, there are lots of different boiler configurations, I'm sure. But what I'm worried about is that in so doing, may delay this coming back to board. This, they may push this off into a future board meeting, and I don't know if that will have an impact on the timeline for getting the work done if we undertake that, that research at this time.
I mean, I think it's really important that, so I think we could reasonably pass everything but the boilers if it's going to take a month to get that sort of information back to the board. But I really do think, because we're installing these for, I know boilers have a lifespan in the tens of years. And so are we planning to be burning? in the tens of years, and so are we planning to be burning natural gas in 2050? Like, what's our, what's our long-term plan?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think we can go back and, and have a look at what might be commonly used. It doesn't mean that just because it isn't used here, it can't be. But we do have a certain amount of urgency with getting on with replacing inefficient systems, even with the systems that we have recommended now. I think between now and board, we can have a look to see if we can find any commonalities with any other board, but I can tell you now that there is a great deal of difficulty with a number of these systems actually running a facility the size of a school, a high school. And so it's not just a matter of money, although that has to come into consideration, the operational costs, what it takes to upkeep and maintain these things. So we'll do our best to have a look at it, but like the Associate Director said, I think I would be really loathe to delay the limited upgrading that we're talking about, that does provide, albeit with fossil fuels, some greater efficiency than we've got now, for that sort of research to be done, especially if we can't find any examples upon which we can rely.
So I suppose, just a direct question, is the intention to be burning fossil fuels in our buildings in 2020, 2040, 2050?
Mr. Chair, through you. I don't think it's our intention to keep doing that sort of thing. I think we always do try and look at alternatives and see what we can do, but our biggest concern is keeping kids safe, keeping them warm at these times, and it is a challenge in our climate to find something, so it's a balance that we're trying to strike. We want to be sustainable, we want to be environmentally sensitive, but we also have to have a system that we can rely on, that keeps the kids safe and learning environments appropriate. So we try and walk that balance while always looking for improvements.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I simply wanted to, to say that by my recollection, when we discussed this at Agenda Planning, this report and recommendation, and also the other two action items for tonight, I think were, were all flagged as time-sensitive, because there are some deadlines involved for some of that. And certainly, the sooner we can approve this budget, the sooner staff can get busy making the arrangements they need to make to, to do the repairs and renovations and system replacements that, that are required. It's never easy getting it all done through the summer months, and I, I think staff actually do a rather amazing job of getting as much done as they do get done through the summer. The fact is that some of these projects are challenging. When you open up school walls to do things, you sometimes get surprises. And, you know, we do our best to spend as much money as we can to, to try to nibble away at that backlog, although it's not always easy. But I think that the projects that are listed here wouldn't be here if there weren't a very good reason for needing us to get started on them now.
Thank you very much, Trustee Scott. And seeing no other speakers, we're back to Trustee Schwartz for a wrap-up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments that, that my colleague have, has raised with respect to sort of lessening our, our environmental footprint. Certainly support, support those efforts. At the same token, recognizing that, that we do have a backlog in, in repairs and facilities, and certainly requiring upgrades to, to some quite old boilers. I know I've had a couple schools which have had sort of emergency boiler replacement necessary, so I think I wouldn't want us to delay too far, and certainly appreciate if we can look into, if staff can look into sort of that cost differential, as we've raised on other issues previously as well. But I do think it's important that we support the recommendation in front of us and, and continue to work on the backlog. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to call the question on report, on the recommendations that are, well, used to be up on the screen, but are in your report. All those in favor?
Half in favor.
Opposed? And that carries. Thank you very much for your report. So moving on to item 6.2, Updates to Policy P.137, SCL Concussion Management. I'd like to call upon Associate Director Reynolds to introduce the report.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, with the passing of Rowan's Law in 2019 and the introduction of revised PPM 158, we have a significant compliance issue, as there have been some significant changes in terms of provincial direction, and we want to ensure that our students are, are playing and learning as safe as possible. So we've invited to the floor Superintendent Tuaish and the Program and Learning Team, who have undertaken a leading this work to introduce the revised policy.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We are here tonight for your approval of the revisions to our district's concussion management policy to align with the revised PPM 158, which is the School Board Policies on Concussion, in order to meet our district requirement for February 1st, 2020. But I would first like to share with you a very short video. I need to share with you, it is a tough video, but it is important and impactful to watch. family. It was part of a launch for the new concussion awareness and management policies. Our district has an important connection to the provincial concussion policy. This is not just about alignment to a PPM. Rowan Stringer was our student, and we are very mindful of our responsibility in terms of concussion awareness, prevention, and management. What we are talking about is our most important work, because this is our work in support of student safety. This work reflects cross-departmental collaboration since, since September, including our team here, our instructional coach for Health and Physical Education, the involvement of Associate Director Reynolds, Superintendent Lehman and his Department of BNLT, and the incredible support of Executive Officers Giroux and her team in Communications and Board Services. At this point, I'd like to pass it to System Principal Alexander and Offerd to share key highlights.
Thank you. The first thing that we want to highlight is that many of the key required components of the PPM already exist in our current policy and procedure. There has been province-wide consultation as a part of this PPM, and in support of the revisions, the ministry has provided all of the required resources to align with Rowan's Law. It is important to note that our resources are also aligned with OFIA, which is the Ontario Physical and Health Educators Association. The resources that we have available include age-appropriate and translated materials for our learners, concussion codes of conduct for students, parents, and coaches, as well as training resources for staff. We will be using our staff and student portals, our D2L platform, our board and school websites to ensure that these materials are made readily available to students, parents, and staff.
So just in summary, the revisions to the policy on concussion management are aligned with Rowan's Law, which protects amateur athletes, including students, by improving concussion safety on the field and at school. The revised policy reflects our commitment to student safety, injury prevention, and well-being through strengthening the processes that ensure awareness, training, and communication for students, parents, and for staff. Concussion safety is a core component of the OCDSB's work to help all students succeed and lead safe, healthy, and active lives. Thank you.
Trustee Schwartz?
Thank you very much. I would like to move the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Introduction, Trustee Schwartz?
Just to say thank you very much for, for bringing this forward. Certainly, I remember the, the local connection to, to this particular policy. I've seen the evolution of the policy at our board as well. And having a child who's sustained multiple concussions, and we still don't know long-term what those impacts are going to be on him, certainly very happy to see continued improvement on our policies, certainly in terms of return to, return to school, how we identify and all of that. So certainly very much in favor of, of moving this, this policy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Campbell?
Thank you. Thanks for the report. A couple of questions. I noticed in the, in the PPM, the states in part, Folio 30 at the bottom, Ministry of Education considers the OFIA concussion protocol to be the minimum standard for risk management. And in our policy, we say that we will be basing our guidelines on the OFIA, basically what OFIA has promulgated. So I guess one question that arises for me is whether the OFIA standards are maybe too weak or too minimal, given the note in the, in the PPM. And is this the only authoritative body that we could refer to confidently? That's my first question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The OFIA guidelines were created as a result of the provincial consultation in terms of working with our medical professionals. All of these guidelines and resources would be the result of the, the expert voices that were involved. An example of when we say the minimum is the minimum number of people that would be trained would involve, as an example, coaches, trainers. What we are looking at as a district, and if we use the example of an elementary school from a procedure perspective, we get more falls and hits at recess than we would if we looked exclusively at inter-school athletics. So that would be an example of where we would be looking at a procedural level to go deeper than the minimum standards.
If I may just add to that a little bit too, though, sorry, just to build on that, the OFIA guidelines are well-established in the province and have a long history of support on the part of OSB and other, you know, risk management agencies. Although they set a minimum, it is in fact a very robust minimum to ensure safety. So we typically, and OSB often has us refer to OFIA guidelines to establish what would be considered a, an adequate measure of safety. There's always an option to go beyond, but they do try to balance, taking into consideration the education context, what is reasonable and doable, but also provide an adequate degree of, of safety and assurance.
I appreciate that. So we really have kicked the tires on this. We're satisfied with the robustness of the protocols. There's an implicit invitation to do more, but that's, that's fine. With respect to the policy changes, I have no real troubles with this. Has to be done, it's good to do. On Folio 40, though, 3.2C, but it's sort of elsewhere as well, it suggests, you know, their administrators, educators, and, and, and school staff and others play an important role in the prevention of concussions, but also in the identification of suspected concussion, et cetera, and there's similar language throughout. And it's just more of a, I guess, a question of information. And maybe it's inescapable, and maybe even desirable. But does the provincial direction increase the risk of liability for school boards and school staff in terms of their responsibilities to identify and prevent? Or has the liability landscape fundamentally not changed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. One of the pieces in our policy, of course, was to consult with our risk management team, who reviewed our policy in terms of our requirements around OSB, so there would be no changes in terms of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say how much I appreciated the way this was done. There are actually quite a few changes in the wording in this policy from what we had before. I think it is good to be more specific, but when you come right down to it, the bottom line is still the same as it was before. The, the purpose and guiding principles have not changed. What we really want to do is to make sure that our system and our schools and our staff are in a position to make sure that everything we can do is done to, to prevent students from having concussions, and if they happen to have concussions, to make sure those, that that condition is recognized and dealt with as early as possible, because we really don't want to lose any more kids. So thank you very much to staff for a job well done.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lara?
So it is my understanding this is being brought forward because of provincial legislation, correct? So given that, I'm wondering if the reference to the Occupiers Liability Act is a requirement of the provincial legislation on Folio 41?
I don't know if Superintendent McCoy might be in a position to offer an opinion on the referencing to the act?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's a requirement or not, but we'll certainly take a look at that.
I ask because I, I went through and I read the Occupiers Liability Act, and it talks about the responsibility of public institutions to make sure that their, their spaces are safe. But I worry that including it in places that it isn't necessary, of course, we're going to try and make our spaces as safe for everyone as possible. I just worry that it's going to continue to push us in a direction around fear of litigation, because this is, it's a litigative piece of legislation. It's around the responsibilities of public institutions as they relate to how other people can sue the school board, or how they could sue other public institutions. And I worry that putting it in places it isn't required is going to continue to contribute to that fear of litigation that I have spoken about in the past. And so if we could find out if this is actually required, because if it's not required, I think that I wouldn't put it in here. But I really sort of need that information before I can make an informed decision about whether I want to try and amend this.
We'll certainly take a look at that and try to find out if it's, if it's required or not.
All right. If that's all the speakers, we'll turn it back to Trustee Schwartz for a wrap-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think as Chair of the Audit Committee, just if I can just make one small comment on the, the minimizing slips and falls, it really falls under the, the prevention strategies, which is one of the things that we certainly look at in the Audit Committee as well, and just in terms of trying to reduce the number of slips and falls at our facilities, not just from a liability perspective, but it's just because it's good to do, good practice. So I would encourage the trustee to come to some of the Audit Committee meetings, because this is where we discuss these types of, these types of issues as well, so. But just in, in closing for this item, I'm really happy to see the, the clarity in, in language that's being proposed. In particular, I, I really like the addition of any student with a suspected concussion can't return to full participation without sort of a physician's consent or nurse practitioner's consent, and I think that's a really great addition to this as well, because that really, I think, closes the loop for everyone involved to ensure that that child is safe to return. So, so thank you to staff, and I hope everyone will support this renewed policy.
So thank you very much, Trustee Schwartz, and I'd like to call the question on the recommendation on your screen for Report 20-006. All those in favor?
Half in favor.
Opposed? And that passes. Thank you very much. So moving on to item 6.3, Report 20-014, Minor Revisions to Policy P.137. So moving on to item 6.3, Report 20-014, Minor Revisions to Policy P121.gov Accessibility. And I'd like to call upon the associate director to introduce the item.
So it's my pleasure to call to the table Executive Officer Giroux. Although it is a very minor revision, I know she'll want to provide introduction and speak to from where she is.
I'll start from here and see if there are many questions. So we have a policy on accessibility, and we have multiple procedures underneath that policy. And the province has introduced some changes with respect to service animals. We had a procedure on service dogs and a reference to service dogs in the policy. This is an amendment to the policy to refer to service animals, and the procedure has undergone more comprehensive revisions in accordance with the PPM. And that is posted on the district website. It was time-sensitive, and so we've gone ahead and posted those changes. And happy to answer any questions. As I say, the policy changes are minor.
Trustee Campbell?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I appreciate the suggested policy changes, minor, though I'm wondering whether indeed more work isn't wise to look at. So for instance, in the covering report, the conveying report for this, it suggests that in terms of non-dog service animals, this would only be allowed in extraordinary circumstances where no other reasonable method of accommodation in the school setting had been successful in meeting the demonstrated disability-related learning needs of the student. But that's not in the policy. And I guess if we're going to make distinctions between service animals in terms of different tests and effectively different levels of expectations or right to be able to access the support of a service animal, I think that's the kind of thing that probably should be in policy. But further on that, it's not clear to me that we should be importantly distinguishing between service dogs, as we've traditionally done, and other service animals. My understanding from reading the PPM is that effectively it's meant to be a corrective to school boards who perhaps have not properly considered other service animals. And if there's demonstrable safety and manageability with respect to an alternative service animal, which surely are the tests, whether it's whatever the species, and if it's as related to the learning needs or well-being of the student as a service dog, what might be, I don't know why there'd be different tests or different criteria employed. So to me, surely it goes to those objective measures, not species. So I have a possible amendment. I'd like to maybe discuss between now and board with respect to how we might look at altering this somewhat in the policy. I'll think about it. I'm open to discussion. I will note in 2.7A, it also refers to physical reliance on a guide dog or other animal. Again, we seem to be elevating some service animals above others. I'm not really quite sure why. The... And I guess that's it for me. So I look forward to discussion between now and board, and just flagging, I may have a possible amendment in this area for board. Thank you.
So did I hear that you wanted to perhaps move the motion?
And I'd like very much to move the motion.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Campbell. Trustee Lara?
I was planning to move this motion. I think it's important we pass it.
Thank you. Trustee Schwartz? Trustee Jenikins?
Just one small note on Folio 57, 2.10. Description of what a service animal is means a domesticated animal that may legally reside in an urban residential home. A number of schools in my zone are rural, and I'm wondering if we should just remove the word urban and leave it as legally reside in a residential home?
Staff comment before we possibly?
We can certainly take a look at that. One of the things we were reconciling with some of these definitions is language from different sources around service animals to differentiate. It's not as complex when we're talking about dogs. And trustee Campbell mentioned, you know, is there a tendency towards dogs versus other animals? And what I would say is there is more infrastructure in place for dogs to be trained and used as service animals than there is for some other animals. So in the case of something like a ferret, which can be a service animal in some cases, the language in terms of the definition, and that's where the urban and rural piece would come in. So we'll take a closer look at that. And the last thing I would say, and it gets to trustee Campbell's point, and that is I appreciate the point about the language in the report being preferential to dogs in a sentence that was highlighted, and I don't think that's the intent. The language that's in the report may have had as much to do with where we are in our journey of crafting the report and finalizing the policy and procedure and getting back to the reconciliation of the language in the letter of transmittal. So the real comparison is have we aligned the policy and procedure appropriately? And are we moving towards the proper accommodation of service animals generally and to making sure that we have a process in place to accommodate any parent or student who comes forward with a request for a service animal?
So given that, trustee Jenikins, did you want to propose amendment, or are you okay for now?
No, I'm okay for now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we're back to trustee Campbell?
I'll use just a moment of wrap-up to further expand this. I'm thinking it'll save time later on. I don't know if it's the most recent version of the procedure. It was updated January 2020. Again, there it suggests, in terms of the text I read, "Service animals other than dogs shall only be considered in exceptional, extraordinary," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So again, we're making a very strong distinction potentially in the procedure, which is not warranted in the policy, and which I don't think is warranted by the PPM. So I think we need to potentially look at that. With that, I urge everybody to approve this before us right now.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to call the question on the motion. All those in favor?
All in favor.
Opposed? And abstentions? And that passes. Thank you very much. I'm going to call a five-minute recess before we launch into the very, very important and long-awaited matter for discussion, mental health strategy. And I'd like everyone back. It's about 12 minutes to nine, so about five minutes to nine. So thank you very much.
All right, let's call the meeting back to order. Thank you very much, and now we're going to move on to item Madison Discussion, item seven point one, and this is the long awaited and much deserved report nineteen, nineteen dash one one two, Mental Health Strategy, and I'm going to call upon Associate Director Reynolds to introduce the item.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, I don't think any further introduction required, so I'll turn things right over to Superintendent Simmons and Manager Dueschner.
Mr. Chair, thank you, and as you acknowledged, it has been coming around for a while, and work on our Mental Health Strategy two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two began actually in the spring of two thousand and eighteen, so close to two years ago, where a steering committee was comprised of a variety of stakeholders who began taking a look at a review of the existing strategy at that time, taking a look at provincial and local data, and conducting various focus groups. You'll recall last spring, an initial draft was brought to Committee of the Whole for review, and subsequently shared with ACE, SEAC, and IAC. Dr. Dueschner and her team utilized the feedback that we received through those committees up through the, into the fall, to make the changes and revisions which you see before you this evening. As I mentioned, we have been working pretty hard on this for quite some time, but we're very interested to hear the conversation tonight, so that we can start to incorporate some of the comments and questions, and some of the suggestions that folks might have into our annual action plans as we work to realize the mental health strategy over the next three years or so. I'll turn it over to Dr. Dueschner.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I can't even begin to tell you how delighted I am to be, to be here, and to have the opportunity to share with you the OCDSB Mental Health Strategy. This strategy, very important work, will guide our work to support student mental health for the next three years, and although our focus in our work is for, with, and about students, we anticipate that the impact of this work will indirectly affect staff well-being and family well-being. The strategy, as you may know, is required by the Ministry of, by the Ministry of Education in Ontario, and is supported by School Mental Health Ontario, which provides the guidelines and the areas of focus. These identified areas have been aligned with our OCDSB strategic plan, with specific goals and strategies incorporated into our culture of innovation, culture of caring, and culture of social responsibility. As Peter mentioned, the strategy is the culmination of a review of current literature, review of provincial and local data related to mental health, and consultation with staff, parents, students, and board committees. This is help provide information regarding areas of need, as well as suggestions for effectively supporting student mental health. The document begins with an introduction to provide background information, such as defining mental health, the relationship between mental health and mental illness, the factors and experiences that can impact mental health. It also sets the context, including why mental health should be addressed in schools, and the overall model for promoting and supporting student mental health as set out by School Mental Health Ontario. I'd like to specifically draw your attention to the model referred to as AIM. It's on page four, the Aligned and Integrated Model. This model highlights the various levels of support that can be provided for students, recognizing that students' needs are different. The goal is to provide the right level of service at the right time for students. The foundational level focuses on mental health promotion. This is the work that is considered to be good for all students, and it's sufficient for about eighty percent of our students. This involves creating safe, welcoming, inclusive learning spaces that promote mental health by enhancing social emotional skills, such as being able to identify and manage emotions, stress management, building healthy relationships, managing confidence, building self-confidence, and self-competency. The next level focuses on targeted prevention. This prevention work is necessary for about thirteen to fifteen percent of our student population. These are the students who need a bit more support in terms of building and maintaining mental health. This could involve support through accommodations for learning, or what we might want to consider a higher dose of skill building. The next level focuses on direct intervention for students who are coping with mental health challenges, or diagnosed mental illnesses. This is essential work that applies to about three to five percent of our students. This work involves mental health assessments, intervention, and treatment, which often includes collaboration with and referral to our community service providers. And as you, as you likely know, our community service providers in the area of mental health are mandated to provide clinical services, intervention services, as opposed to mental health promotion and prevention services. This range of work is done through an equity lens, using evidence-based or evidence-informed, culturally responsive, and culturally sensitive approaches, and engages students, and as much as possible, families and caregivers. So with respect to the strategic priorities, each area has specific goals, and identifies strategies to work towards those goals. Under the culture of innovation, the goal is to create conditions to this work, and to do this work in creative, evidence-supported, and culturally responsive ways that engage our diverse communities. A couple of examples of strategies to accomplish this are to focus on shared language and understanding of mental health as a positive concept, having clear protocols and practices that are consistently implemented across our district, and communicating information about mental health to our communities in ways that are engaging and culturally informed. Under the culture of caring, one of the goals is to continue capacity building for our staff, students, parents, and guardians, to deepen the understanding of the factors and experiences that impact mental health, to help identify the signs of mental health challenges, and to be able to access information regarding the resources on a range of services and supports, both within, within the school district and within the community. The other goal is to promote mental health through evidence-based or informed, culturally sensitive programming, to enhance social emotional learning skills, and to prevent mental health challenges. Within the culture of social responsibility, it's important to recognize that mental health needs vary depending on the experiences our students face. The goal is to ensure that we focus on specific populations to reduce barriers to accessing service. To address this goal, we need to work collaboratively with our community partners. As such, we will continue to foster relationships with a wide range of partners to ensure that all students have access to the supports and intervention services if and when they need them. In addition, processes need to be put in place to ensure that we are tracking and monitoring our progress, and assessing the impact of our work on, on students' mental health. This can be done in part, using existing data collection tools, like our school surveys, but also in consultation with our research evaluation analytics department and our School of Mental Health Ontario colleagues. We'll be exploring and developing evaluation tools that will measure the impact of our work. And finally, as the strategy covers a broad range of strategies, some of which need to build on each other, I'm just going to highlight that, the comment that Peter made, that the strategy will be operationalized through our annual action plans, with very specific activities, timelines, and success indicators. Thank you for your attention, and we welcome any questions you might have.
Trustee Lyra?
So I've mentioned this a number of times in a number of places, but we are seeing, as a society, an increased rate in the number of children with anxiety, and this is more than the differential between the students who were diagnosed with it in the past, and the students, or the students who weren't diagnosed with it in the past, and the number of students who are diagnosed with it now. There is a societal shift happening where more young people are getting anxiety than happened in the past years. I'm wondering what this plan is going to have the board do to address the increasing rate of children with anxiety.
Thank you for that question. It's, it's an excellent question, and you're absolutely right, there is an increase in symptomatology around anxiety, and the World Health Organization, which is where we do obtain a lot of our information from, is predicting that that trend will continue, which is, which is very concerning. To answer that question in terms of what specifically are we going to do, I think we need to remember that we, we work within a community, and we have a role to play, but others have a role to play as, as well. We need to look at what those societal factors are that are specifically impacting anxiety, and start to look at how we can address those. Within the school context, I think we need to look at that AIM model that I, that I just described. There's a lot of work that we can do at the foundational level with, with some very young, starting with some very young children, in terms of helping them identify their big emotions, and helping them find ways to manage those big emotions, and that starts with self-regulation and being able to regulate, right, their, their emotions. Self-regulation doesn't happen overnight. We need to have, we need to provide children with opportunities to co-regulate, and eventually they can learn to self-regulate. We need to help children, as they get older, understand that there's a difference between being stressed and worried, and being anxious. We've become a, a society where anxiety is a very commonly used word, and we're, we're using it when we really are thinking more about stress and worry, and we need children to understand that life has its challenges, and sometimes children will experience stress, sometimes adults will experience stress, and that's okay. There are actually good reasons, right, to experience stress, and it can be quite adaptive to, to experience stress. So they need to understand the difference between stress and anxiety, and then, as they get older, again, they need to understand what anxiety is, and why it's an adaptive response, and a natural adaptive response for, for our bodies, and again, learn those coping strategies. If we can do a good job of providing those foundational skills, and helping children understand more about, about stresses, about anxiety, and how to manage anxiety, then we're actually going to be able to prevent the escalation of those, of those symptoms, and hopefully, in, in at least some of the cases, prevent the diagnosis, the need for diagnosis of an anxiety disorder.
So you said that the community, that we are part of a community, and that it is in part the community that is resulting in young people ending up with anxiety. I want to make sure that we're not passing the buck, I'm going to go ahead and say we are probably the second largest influence in a young person's life after family, and it's really important that we take a lead on helping these young people learn about emotional regulation, learn about the, all the things you just talked about, because I'm going to go ahead and say a lot of families don't have clinical expertise, or time to read the World Health Organization, or the, the capacity to, to teach young people these sorts of things. So I just want to make sure that we, we as a board are ready to, to talk about this, and to really push as a lead in the community on addressing this. I have a follow-up question about what is the board planning to do about the intersection between mental health and students with special education needs? Because we, we know that students with special education needs are going to have a harder time accessing services, or going to be more impacted by a, a wait time in services, and could you just elaborate a little bit on what the, the goals or the plan for the board is with regards to that?
Another excellent question. Certainly, in taking a look at the, the goals, the, the goal and some of the strategies identified under the culture, culture of social responsibility, meeting the needs of, the mental health needs of students with special education needs is highlighted in, in there. So we, we need to take a look at that within, within the broader scope at the foundational level, but we also need to parcel it out a little bit, right, because the needs are going to be somewhat different. We're still learning in some areas, in terms of what the best ways are to approach mental health for certain populations, and I'm going to use autism as an example. So there is a growing body of literature in terms of how best to support the mental health needs of children who are on the autism spectrum, and that's fairly new. So we need to, we need to look at the literature, and we need to make sure that the approaches that are being used with students with special needs are evidence-based, and therefore going to be effective in terms of supporting those student needs. The same could be said for students that, for example, have a learning disability. We know that there are certain mental, mental health challenges that are concurrent with certain kinds of learning disabilities, or certain behavioral disorders, so we really need to take a really good, hard look at the, at the literature and the evidence that would help us to provide the best level of support and intervention for those students.
Mr. Chair, if I can just jump in for a second, Dr. Dueschner tweaked my memory to the Ontario Advisory Panel for Autism, and their recommendations through the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services. And within that document, and there have been memos passed through the trustees as well, it's, it talks quite extensively about the need for mental health supports and services for students with autism, and when we, when Dr. Dueschner talks about us being part of a community, that's a very important part that we'll have to continue to collaborate with, as, as mental health providers across the community, reach up and grasp, or seize the challenge in front of them with respect to supporting students with autism. So it'll be an ongoing process, which is why the annual action plans will continue to be revised and get more specific, as we get more information coming through both MCCSS, Education and Health, Ministry of Child, Community, and Social Services.
So you mentioned that there's a, a growing body of research, and I know, I know a lot of the research around autism is being done now, and has been done in the, the very recent past. I'm wondering how the board keeps up to date with the ever-increasing body of research, and how we decide which ones we're going to listen to if we haven't had five or ten years of clinical or, or trials to say which, with, which methods are the best, and sort of wondering how we pick and choose which, which methods that are currently evolving we're going to try?
First of all, we would, we would look at a range of literature. We tend to start with Canadian research, if we can, if we can find that. In some areas, that's not always easy, and so we'd then, we would then move to American literature. What we are looking for would be, what would be considered gold standards in research, so if we can find sort of double-blind kinds of studies, we, where we, where we're getting information from universities or clinical settings that have strong reputations, solid, you know, credentials, that, that kind of thing. And then we, we vet it through, through our professional, professional staff, so our psychology staff, for example, right, as, as psychologists and psychological associates, they're trained in, in research, as am, as am I as a clinical psychologist, and so we would be taking a, a good, hard look with a very critical eye on, on the research to ensure that the method that we're going to employ is considered to be a gold standard, if, if possible. We recognize that not all of the approaches at this point, that we might want to try are evidence-based. There, as it is growing, some of the, some of the approaches are going to be more evidence-informed, and in those circumstances, we, we're going to, we're going to do some pilot testing. We're, we're not going to roll out major initiatives until we've, we've, until we've done a little bit of pilot testing, and seen for ourselves that, that, that particular kind of approach works. We also, I, I referenced School of Mental Health Ontario in my, in my opening comments, and that, that organization closely aligned with the Ministry of Education is a great support to, to school districts also, in terms of vetting, vetting evidence-informed approaches, and also supporting some of the and also supporting some of the pilot studies that we're, that we're doing in our board, and then also in, in other boards across the district.
So we are fortunate in Ottawa to be in a city with three universities and two colleges. How much effort, time, or consideration has been given to doing research with the student body, to try and figure out what the best possible implementation for the future might be? I know you said that we pull, if we can, from Canadian sources, but somebody has to make Canadian sources of data, and I'm wondering what your thoughts on having Ottawa or the OCDSB participate in creating some of those ground, ground-based research?
And we are absolutely involved in, in some of that, in some of that work. I can give you an example. There is a psychotherapeutic approach that is being piloted in, in Ottawa at this point in time, and we'll be collecting data on, on that. We are certainly approached by not only the two universities in Ottawa, but also by other universities to, to access students in order to conduct research. And we have a research committee that, that looks at those applications, and approves if they are considered to be, you know, appropriate, and the, the results will be helpful to, to our students, and, and inform our, our processes. So we're certainly very involved in, in furthering research.
I've got three seconds, so I'd like to go back on the list.
No problem, Trustee Lyra. Trustee Campbell?
Thank you. Interesting stuff. I have a variety of questions, and maybe I can make it in one segment. I'll try, but may not be successful. I guess one of my questions, I've been looking at the, on, in the, in the handout, under key performance indicators. I'm not necessarily seeing rates of, effectively, I don't know how to describe them, behavioral outbreaks, or violence in the classroom, elementary-age, or perhaps even earlier-aged students acting out is certainly an issue prevalent at a lot of boards. So, but I'm not necessarily seeing a KPI, looking at like incident rates. Have we, have we, have we ameliorated things in terms of our incident, reported incident rates for misbehavior, which surely is related to mental health? It may not be mental illness, it might be mental, the kids are acting out for one reason or another. But are we looking at potentially tracking that kind of thing as part of our KPIs? Or, or are KPIs really yet to be determined?
Mr. Chair, we're just having a little conversation back and forth, so I'll start, and then Dr. Dueschner can take over. Certainly, the KPIs are a work in progress. I know when we talk about mental health and mental well-being, the measures that we have are sometimes elusive to us, in trying to, to get pure statistical data that's quantitative. Certainly, part of our review will, will involve qualitative research, trying to get down to some understanding about the kinds of things that are going on with our students and in our schools, and working to assess the effectiveness of the interventions we have in place. There are some areas that, I mean, there, there could well be standardized measures that the district could consider implementing, or, or using across the district, but then we would have to take a look at the resources, if we could even find them. We'd have to take a look at the resources that would be required to implement such a standardized assessment on a full scale across the district. So we are kind of in that, in an area, when we talk about mental health, trying to consolidate the qualitative data sources that we have available to us through, through reports. Dr. Dueschner did mention the Our School Survey. And in addition, just as we did leading up in, in the spring of 2018, and the months following after that, a series of focus groups and things like that, which would help it, give us an indication about the success of our existing plan, and help inform the development of our next plan.
Thank you for that. The behavior issues in the elementary panel are frequently mentioned, and a serious issue, I think, not just in this board, but in a number of boards. And I think it would be unfortunate if our mental health strategy effectively was silent on that issue, and wasn't looking to ameliorate it as a goal, so it's perhaps something to take under advisement. I think personally that would be unfortunate. I have a terminological clarification question, if I may, and that is the difference between mental health and mental well-being. Because some sentences use both terms, understand the difference between mental health and mental illness, that, that clarification's been drawn very nicely. But in terms of mental health and mental well-being, sometimes the two terms are used together as if they're two separate things. But at the beginning, the World Health Organization describes mental health as a state of well-being, et cetera, et cetera. I'm really not sure if we're, if there's a true distinction between the terms, or are they actually synonyms, or is there a difference?
Hi, thank you. So, mental health and well-being, when we, when we talk about mental health and mental well-being, those are, those are synonymous terms. Well-being, however, is a more general term, because there are other forms of well-being in addition to mental well-being. You could have spiritual well-being, and physical well-being as, as examples as, as well. I just wanted to get back to your comment around behavior, and the high level of dysregulated behavior that we, that we are seeing, particularly in our younger, in our younger students, and this phenomena that seems to be happening across, across the province, and I'm, I would argue, across the country as, as well. It is certainly an area that we are very concerned about, and we are, we are addressing it from, again, various perspectives. So looking at the foundational level, looking at what the, what the learning conditions are that will help to foster the development of self-regulation skills in students, to minimize the, the dysregulated behavior, right through to being able to identify some of the factors related to why students are engaging in that kind of behavior. And for different students, the reasons are, are different. And then making sure that we're providing the appropriate kinds of supports and interventions for, for those students. So it's, it's certainly not an area that we, that we in any way are, are ignoring. We talk about that as externalizing behavior, and externalizing behavior is just as important to address as internalizing behavior, which would be anxiety and mood disorders.
Thank you. Maybe it does go to resources the board is willing to commit to, I guess, the subject of mental health. But it would be interesting, for instance, to establish a baseline, I think, of, in say, grade three, or whatever is appropriate, in terms of incident rate and that kind of thing. After result of our interventions, our, our training, our speaking with students in terms of introducing social-emotional learning into, into regular teaching. Please put me back on the list.
Thank you. Trustee Campbell, Trustee Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to thank staff for the work that they've, they've put in this. I particularly appreciate the, the framing of mental health in a positive light. I think often, in the past, when we've talked about mental health, it is really in that negative sort of space. And, you know, I, I'm, as a trustee, in my, in my first few years, I shall never forget the phone call that I received late one evening, where a superintendent had to call me because a young man took his life on, on school property. And, and I think about, I think about that situation as, what could we have done as a system to, to prevent that? And, and I think, I see a lot of pieces in here, but what one piece I don't see, very clearly articulated in, in terms of the, the back part in some of the strategies, is there's a lot of reference in here as to, you know, identification of, of mental illness, or, or interventions, perhaps, that might be necessary, because educators are dealing with, with the young people. But I don't see any strategies that are necessarily laying out how one identifies. What do, what kind of pieces do you need to look for? And so I, I really wanted to ask staff, is, is it that that's already just happening in terms of professional development with educators for purposes of identification? Or is that perhaps a piece missing? The other thing I really, really liked about this document is the cultural appropriateness, and references to the cultural appropriate discussions, recognizing that culturally, mental health is seen differently. And I think that's a really important step in the right direction as well. I guess one of the questions I had on, on page nine was, for students, was this idea of establishing a youth advisory, something, I'm not sure what that advisory, I think there's a word missing, but a council, or, or committee, or so forth. I guess one of the questions I would have is, who might be on that? And would we be actually looking at ensuring that there's diversity of cultural representation on that as well, to ensure that that piece is, is not forgotten? So I think there's lots of great stuff here. I think there's a couple pieces where I don't see quite that connection as, as being raised, and, and could perhaps be, be included. But I certainly would, would like to see our, our board really focus on, you know, not just having the partners out in the community, but ensuring that the training within our, within our system is in place, so that, that little boy would still be with us.
Thank you for that. And the answer, I guess, to the first part of your question, with respect to the signs and the look-for's, and the details, in terms of what the steps are in supporting a student who might have suicidal ideation, or suicidal behavior. It's not articulated in detail in the, in the document, but it is incorporated in the work that we do. So for example, one of the strategies, excuse me, outlined is using the Supporting Minds document. And that document contains very specific look-for's, in terms of different kinds of mental health challenges, and also provides some steps in terms of how to approach a student, if a staff member is concerned about what they're, what they're observing, and how to access, how to access resources. So much of, much of the signs and the look-for stuff is, is contained in other areas. So another example would be the training that we do in terms of suicide prevention. The specific signs and symptoms associated with suicidal ideation and, and suicidal behavior would be part of that training. We also have a procedure, crisis prevention, crisis intervention, and post-vention procedure, which lays out for administrators in a very step-by-step way, the, the, the individual tasks to engage in, in terms of supporting students, you know, experiencing different kinds of mental health issues. The other, the other question that you had with respect to the youth advisory, so it is our goal to create a youth advisory, to help inform the, the action plan, and then, of course, moving forward to the, to the next strategy down the road. And we would be very, we will be very mindful of ensuring that we are including a diverse range of students, for sure.
Thank you, Trustee Schwartz. I'll put you back on the list, and we'll move on to Trustee Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks very much for the revised version of the strategy that we're seeing tonight. I've certainly been privy to a lot of the discussions that have happened in many committees, as this has moved forward, and, and it's really nice to see the fruits of all that thought and discussion that has gone into it. I guess the one thing that concerns me a little bit is not a detail at all, it's, it's the big thing. And that is what our, our concept of this really is, what kind of a mindset we're bringing to it. The title is right, it's Mental Health Strategy, it's not How to Prevent Mental Illness Strategy. But when I start looking at all of the different things that are listed as strategies and things we're going to do, so many of them focus on the peak of the period, of the pyramid that is illustrated on page four, the ANG Pyramid. And I look at page three, and I see the circle. And if you take, even if you take diversity and equity lens words out of that, isn't that what we're actually aiming for? To have mental health knowledge, mental health support, strong safety net and pathways, caring conditions for learning, and social-emotional skills for every student. That, to me, is what we, we need to be working towards. So when I see the pyramid on the next page, which has at its pinnacle the word intervene, I have to ask myself if our heads are really in the right place on this, or if we should be taking this pyramid and inverting it, if we're going to use it? Because surely, our biggest focus should be on that foundation level, making sure that all the things that are cited in the circle drawing on page three are in the forefront of our minds. The other things are the things we do when what we're trying to do isn't working. And it's important to have those, and to work on those. But surely, where we're coming from should be from the place where we have that focus on the student, and the foundational things that every student should, should have and be able to display. And I just appreciate some staff comment on that, because so often, we get messed up from choosing the wrong language to talk about things, and we end up putting it all backwards and upside down. And I really would hate for something as important as this to get into our heads facing in the wrong direction.
Thank you, Trustee Scott. That's a very good point that you're, that you're raising. The intent very much is to be focusing on the foundational level. So when we take a look at that, that drawing, what essentially that, that is, is a portion of, and a different way of looking at the pyramid. So when we take a look at creating the conditions for learning and social-emotional learning skills, that is the foundation, that is the base of the triangle. Building mental health knowledge and mental health support is the middle part of the, of the pyramid. And strong netways, net, sorry, strong nets and pathways would be, would be the top part of that, of that pyramid. So all aspects are, are included. Throughout, woven throughout the, the strategy are the examples of the work that is done at that foundational level. And it's important to recognize that the work that is done there is done in collaboration with other departments. So program and learning, for example, is a very important partner, in terms of creating the conditions for, for learning. We do that work together. Similarly, when we look at social-emotional learning skills specifically, the, some of the programs that are, that are mentioned, some of the initiatives that are, that are mentioned in here are specifically those foundational skills. So what I would suggest as examples there would be things like Mind Masters, or Zones of Regulation, Collaborative Problem Solving, Kids Have Stress Too. Those are all, those are all evidence-based initiatives and programs that are good for all kids, and so they are, they are implemented at the classroom, at the classroom level.
Can you put me back on the list, please?
Certainly can, Trustee Scott. Ms. Moulison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of questions on-
I just had a couple of questions on the culture of caring and reaching out to the parent section. It's talking about promoting mental health and wellbeing and, and doing public presentations. I'm just wondering if that's sort of a continuation on the speaker series and, and that sort of thing, or how you plan on rolling that out?
Thanks for that question. So some of it would be, yes, absolutely, in, in collaboration with the, with the work that is done through the speaker series. But within, within our department, we have also created a series of presentations for, for parents which are being delivered by our psychology and social work staff. So we have a presentation on Parent-Child Connection, which is the importance of building relationships through attachment. We have one on developing self-regulation skills. And then we have one on the difference between stress and anxiety and supporting, supporting children and managing their emotions. So those, those are workshops that are, that are available for parents. They're often delivered at school council meetings, for example, and they're delivered directly by our staff.
Are these also being delivered and/or is there materials being provided in other languages for parents that don't speak English so that they have access to this information as well?
At this point, they, the presentations are only in English, but we will certainly be looking at ways to provide this information that is, that is more appropriate for the range of cultures and, and languages that we have within our board.
Has there been thought of reaching out and doing, when we do some of these presentations and maybe live streaming them for parents that aren't able to go, parents that can't get childcare, parents that can't travel there, or parents that, you know, working multiple jobs to keep their families afloat? Is there thought of doing something like that to make sure that they can also take part in these presentations?
That's a really great suggestion and certainly one that we're, we're looking into. At this point, we are recording the teacher, the educator versions of, of the same presentation so that they can be more broadly accessible, but we can, we can certainly look into that for parents as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Scott, could you take the chair for a sec as I have a quick question?
Please go ahead. Trustee Penny?
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for being here, Dr. Kouchner and Superintendent Simmons. I'm just wondering, I did go to, you know, some things put on by different organizations and, and one of the presenters was Dr. Kucher. And he was talking about, one of the main components is mental health literacy, that not everyone is totally aware of what they're experiencing or how to voice it properly or, or just even general awareness of things. So I'm just wondering how much of that is, what components of that go into this strategy or if, or if you've thought about that? Obviously you have, but, but how, how does that relate to that?
Thanks for that question. And yes, mental health literacy is part of the work that we're, we're doing. We have been doing it with educator staff and we've been using the Supporting Minds document, which is a document created by the Ministry of Education. We are familiar with the work of Dr. Kucher from, from the Maritimes. His, his focus tends to be very much on mental illness. His background is as a psychiatrist and so he takes a slightly different perspective and views the work in mental health through a slightly different lens. So yes, absolutely, want to be continuing that focus on mental health literacy, but again, focusing on the, the promotion of mental health and doing the work in terms of preventing mental, mental illness.
Thank you very much. And
You may have the chair back.
Thank you very much.
Unless you, or do you have more questions?
No, that's it. Thank you very much. And we're on to Trustee LaRagin.
So I have some qualms with the language used around Bullet 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 on page 10. It says collaborate with Rita Wood Addiction and Family Services and Ottawa Public Health to ensure quality prevention and intervention related to substance use and abuse. One of the biggest problems facing people who are struggling with addiction is stigma associated with the fact that they are using a substance that is not deemed societally acceptable. That means they're going to have a much harder time reaching out for support because they're, they fear they're going to be judged or stigmatized. I worry that the language that we're using is going to, instead of trying to work to de-stigmatize people who are struggling with addiction, we're going to be looking to prevent substance use. I don't think pushing an abstinence-only model of substance use is beneficial to those who end up using substances in the long run because you're going to end up with people who, for whatever reason, are trying to escape the life that they have. The vast majority of people who take substances or who struggle with addiction with regards to substances do so because they are trying to, to escape something. And when you, when they're trying to escape something and you reinforce that because they are using this as self-medication or because they're using it to escape, they are somehow bad or wrong or less than in some other, in some way. I think that we as a board need to try and combat that notion. And I think the language that we have here doesn't, doesn't address that. Can I, could I get a comment on basically everything I've said?
You made the comment about abstinence and that is, that is not the focus. The focus when we're, when we're talking about people with addictions or those who are using substances is more of a harm reduction model. We use the term prevention in here because we're talking about, we're talking about children. And so much of the work is done around educating children so that they don't begin that, that pathway down into using, into using various substances, right? And so that, that work actually begins at around grade four. So with, with nine-year-olds, when we think of the, the health and phys ed curriculum, the work that's, that's, that's done there in terms of sharing information around smoking and then later through information about alcohol and then, you know, as, as students progress through the grades into other kinds of substances. So the prevention really is focused on educating our younger students to not begin taking any kind of substances. And then later on, if we do have students who are experimenting or who, who become more regular users of, of various kinds of substances through our, through our partnership with Rita Wood and also with Ottawa Public Health, there are different forms of, of intervention, but the focus for that group of students would be more on harm reduction.
So what I'm saying is that by having all of the grade four students with a focus on prevention, which is, I think, the same as abstinent, like pushing an abstinence, don't, don't take these sorts of things because it's bad mentality, you're building a stigma associated with it that is going to carry with them into the future? If in grade four you say drinking is bad, don't drink. And then by, by grade eight, this person is now drinking, the stigma associated with alcohol is going to still be with them from grade four and they're going to have a much harder time seeking out services like Rita Wood or trying to get help because of the stigmas associated with it. And I'm wondering if we as a board have a plan to address this stigma we are creating with substances in, in those younger grades or if the plan is to continue as is?
At this, at this point, the plan is to continue as, as is, to talk to our younger students about the, the health consequences of, of using various kinds of, of substances, talking to them about, excuse me, issues like peer pressure and how to avoid peer pressure. I, I understand your point about stigmatization and absolutely we want to be reducing, reducing stigma, but at the same time, we, we really want to be educating our students to, to understand what, what the implications are and what the consequences are for, for, for using various substances so that they can make informed decisions for themselves as they get older.
Having spoken with a number of teachers of grades five through eight, I don't think there is a reasonable understanding in students about why people choose to use substances. I don't think we explain to them that adults drink because it is fun. We only present the negative and then they get, become curious about why adults are, are doing these sorts of things if they only hear the negative aspects. I'd like to go back on the list.
Thank you very much. Trustee Campbell?
Thank you very much. I'll try and be succinct. I'm trying to pick up the traces from where I was before. Yes, what I wonder is just, again, I'm not trying to design anything here, but just the kind of suggestion I'd like to make is do like a baseline of what we see in whatever is an appropriate grade, say grade three, with respect to social emotional skills, awareness, you know, et cetera. We have an intervention, we have student training, we have staff training, we have awareness raising, de-stigmatization, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Afterwards, have, have the students acquired skills, have they acquired knowledge, have they acquired expertise? Are they more resilient? Right, right? Now that is covered to a certain extent under Bullet 5 in the KPI on page 11 in the handout. Social emotional skills, self-awareness, self-regulation, et cetera. So it'd be nice to be able to see whether we've achieved something, right? So that's just sort of an, an example. Can I ask just generally, the key performance indicators block on that page 11, the last real text page in, in the handout, is that meant to be the key performance indicators simply for the cultural or social responsibility or for all of them? Because it seems to be the only cultural, the only key performance indicator section.
The, no, the key performance indicators are for, for the entire document. Yeah.
I would suggest probably you want this under, under the heading.
Putting on a different page.
Probably needs its own heading. So when I look at it though, what I see is, so KPIs such as staff engagement, did we engage with staff? Yes, we did, because that's what we said we're going to check. We'll establish a youth council or advisory thing. Did we engage with students? Yes, check. So I, I guess it's, so these are things that we did as part of our strategy. We, we reached out to various groups, we reached out to community partners, et cetera. But it's not clear because we did these things that we actually changed anything in a significant way, right? So to me, the key performance indicators are not whether we engaged or not, right? That's a method, that's what we did, right? The key performance indicator is what was the outcome? Like, did we move the dial in some respect with students? Did we move the dial with respect to staff awareness, our empowerment, staff stress levels, you know, et cetera? By this, trying to rush here. As well though, I, I do wonder whether academic achievement makes sense as a key performance indicator. I recognize that wellbeing and mental health may be related, but attribution, if we moved something in, in academic achievement, I don't know how we'd possibly attribute it to what might be done as a result of mental health strategy. I mean, there's a numeracy improvement strategy, there are a whole bunch of things going on. I don't know, I mean, we could report on it, but would it mean anything unless you could somehow tie the attribution? So I'm not really understanding why we'd include that one, to be honest. If I may, and I think, I can finish with this. The, the Ministry and Government Ontario's direction, I think, our, our own board direction is to hold wellbeing at a, at an equal level with learning, right? It's, it's its own good, right? It's not simply a servant to learning. And so I don't know that that is needed, it's just a suggestion.
There was a lot in that, what you've just described. So yes, we would absolutely like to be able to look at the outcomes and the impact of the work that, that we're doing. It's, that's something that we need to give a lot of consideration to in terms of what tools exist to be able to measure some of that. Measuring wellbeing has, you know, its inherent challenges. There's also a time piece associated with that. If we, if we take a baseline measure, implement a particular strategy and then do a post-test, for example, to see if there has been growth in a major area such as, I don't know, social awareness or responsible decision-making. Hard to predict that we would be able to make significant change in a short period of time for, for many of the indicators around wellbeing. It takes more time to, to actually be able to, to see change. For some of the areas such as increasing staff capacity in terms of mental health literacy, we can, we can certainly gather that kind of information. And we do through, through surveys, following the trainings, we, we do some retrospective post-tests where we ask about what they've, what they've learned, how they're going to, what they're going to take away from what they've learned, what are they going to implement moving forward, that, that kind of thing. So we do gather that information from, from staff when we, when we do various kinds of surveys. With respect to the academic achievement, we, what the literature tells us and what we certainly see with, with, with our students is that wellbeing and achievement are absolutely linked together. So when we, when we are working with students who are dealing with some kind of a mental health challenge, we know that that impacts their, their academic, academic achievement, right? So when we're, when we're implementing different kinds of programs and initiatives that help to reduce and mitigate those, those kinds of issues, we would then expect that there would be an increase in their academic achievement. Your point is well taken that this is, this is complex and we wouldn't have a direct causal relationship that one particular initiative is going to have significant, significant impact on academic achievement, but we could argue that it has, it has some role to play.
Sure, I'll have to go back on the list or make a quick comment?
Maybe just go back on the list.
I'll go back.
I can see that our discussion is generating actually a fair bit of trustee anxiety so that, I think this is good. But anyway, let's move on to Trustee Schwartz.
Always joking. So just to follow up, I, I really actually liked Trustee Scott's suggestion of inverting that pyramid. I, I think it visually sets the right, sends the right kind of message that where our focus actually is. And, and I think I wasn't clear on sort of my line of questioning. I had certainly seen the suicide prevention pieces that were, were included in the strategies. My question was more in reference on page three. So when, when talking about the model, it's great, we're talking about, you know, importance of setting the, the right sort of conditions and I think we reference some of the strategies to do that. What I'm not seeing is the reference where it's the model illustrates that students need educators who have the skills and knowledge to notice the signs of emotional difficulty. So yes, while we should be focusing attention sort of on the prevention aspect and, you know, as the old saying goes, you know, the ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure versus, I can't remember, it's 10 o'clock at night and I can't remember the exact phrasing. But sort of that concept I think is intact. Prevention to me is also then ensuring that the frontline workers that we have in our system have the tools and the knowledge for identification early so that we're not having to go to that, the, that intervention on the suicide prevention side, that it's at that extreme. It's the earlier stages and that's not, I don't see that reflected in kind of the strategies. And, and perhaps there are tools that are being used, but they're not, to me, they're not articulated here to say what is happening and a continuing education sort of requirement for those frontline workers. Because I think that part is quite important. We are still at, in the early stages, I would say, of awareness around mental health and identification of mental illness, I think is, is certainly from literature, very well articulated. Societally, we're not there. And I think it's important, you know, it was raised about how parents can learn more and so forth. I think we have to do more on the literacy end, which is also, I think, part and parcel of how you do those identifiers. So that's really what I was trying to get at, that I don't see as clearly reflected in here.
Thanks for that. So if, if we take a look at the culture of caring on page eight, the third bullet point down is, is the reference to what you're talking about, but it may not be articulated in language that is, that is as clear to people who wouldn't necessarily be, be doing the work. Because the, the professional development that we do is specific to the Supporting Minds document, which incorporates the, the points that you're raising.
Okay, then, you know, perhaps articulating it, and maybe within the system that's understood, but it's not like, the parent community, if that's a resource that the parent community can even look at, that makes sense to them. So they understand what the educators are using as a professional development piece, too. I know as a parent, there's lots of resources out there for me to look at, so I know how to talk to my kids. There's, you know, I've attended one of the sessions on Kids Have Stress Too that was delivered at one of my kids' schools. I think it's, though, that there's additional resources that if we articulate it differently, we tend in all of these documents to use a lot of educator language that speaks to educators but doesn't necessarily speak to the broader community that might look at these and say, oh, that might be a resource that's helpful to me, too. So that's kind of where I was thinking. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Schwartz. And we're going to go to trustee Huff, are you there?
I am now. I just wanted to chime in from Britannia here. Three points. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues because they have captured my mindset very well on these issues tonight. So thank you, people, for being the voice sitting around the table. But I wanted to highlight the three things that stood out for me of this discussion going around, just to give a little bit more credence to those three points. The first one is, I think that trustee Lyra is bang on, on the importance of watching the messaging that we can give to the young, that they carry through with them as they age. I think that indirect communication can be a very key source of stigma as we grow older, those things that we hang on to, those echoes in our ears of things that we heard and things that we thought we knew. So I think it will be messaging for the younger children will be very, very important to make sure that it doesn't carry through with the negative side of things if they choose at a later point in time to use or abuse substances. I think that's a very valid point, and I think it should be really considered. Also, I think that trustee Scott was bang on. I noticed the very same thing about that pyramid the moment that I looked at, I thought, no, the top of this isn't, this is wrong, this is backwards. And although, you know, it's an obvious, iconic representation to have the smallest and the least-used method in the smallest tip of the scale, it does get confusing because you think about that tip of that pyramid being the ultimate goal. And so there is maybe some caution to be used or to be pointed out in the use of that form of iconic representation. And the last point that I would like to make is that I think that trustee Campbell was bang on in terms of whether or not the key performance indicators that are listed there are truly measurable elements pertaining to this particular strategy. And so I think that we might want to see some more specific direction with regard to those performance indicators and looking at exactly what we're thinking about, why one will lead to the next. So I just want to caution that sort of general sense of using, and I keep bringing this up every time we talk about the key performance indicators related to the strategic plan, but I think many of the ones that we've come up with are just so general that I don't think we're going to be able to support or not support the work that we have or have not done by using general measures. So I just want to see some specificity moving forward on that. So just general comments there to support the discussion that's gone on so far this evening. That's it.
Thank you very much, trustee Huff. And trustee Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not that we need to do away with pyramids, it's just we need to be careful how we look at them. I seem to feel a similar thing happened with our use of the pyramid to describe tiered interventions in the context of our learning support services work. And it's very easy to do that, but when you put it out there in the front and you make it big, people see it and they grasp it in a certain way, and that doesn't necessarily take them in the direction of thinking that we want them to do. Language and visual image are very important if we want to change a culture. We really need to make sure we're doing it. Looking at some of the other aspects of this, actually, I really like this document because I think it pulls together a lot of things that are very practical things that we actually can do. In terms of the KPIs, some of this is pretty mushy stuff. And there aren't that many good ways to do it, short of getting some genuine out-there researchers to do some proper research to determine the effectiveness. And that's one of the challenges we always have, because the researchers come to us with their proposal, they want to use our kids as subjects. We don't very often get the opportunity to go back to them and say, how would you like to do your doctorate on this trial of an intervention? We're going to put this into our grade-one classrooms or our kindergarten classrooms, and you can go and talk to some other board and see if they would like to be the control board, and just do this over time. I don't know how effective we are in pitching those opportunities to our colleagues in the post-secondary world, and I don't know how amenable they are to considering our suggestions seriously. But that, I think, is one of the paths we're going to need to go if we want to have some seriously solid KPIs. And I guess the last thing I would like to say is how important it is to be doing this now. Because if you follow the media tall, or even if you listen to what people are talking about in the grocery store checkout line, people are misusing the terminology of mental health and psychology all over the place. You know, so-and-so isn't even crazy any longer, they are psychotic. You know, we speak in extremes when we talk about this. We can't be a bit worried, we have to be really anxious, we have to be very stressed. And we're using these terms without an understanding of what they actually mean. The more we can do to bring a sort of more reserved use of the vocabulary with clearer understandings of what the words actually mean, the better. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all of those comments, trustee Scott. Just with respect to the pyramid, that pyramid comes from School of Mental Health, Ontario, and I will pass on the comments around that, and maybe they'll consider flipping it on its head, because I appreciate those comments.
Thank you very much. And now we're back to trustee Lyra.
I'm going to not go back and forth, back and forth, on mental health and addiction, so I'm going to jump to something else. I'm looking at your first bullet on the Culture of Social Responsibility page. You've listed a number of groups. Could you expand on what you mean by students experiencing income inequality, or, sorry, insecurity?
I'm sorry, trustee Lyra, I didn't hear your question. I know it's the first bullet.
Could you expand on what you mean by students experiencing income insecurity?
I'm, we're talking there about students living in poverty, and that is the term that is currently being used in mental health literature.
Would it not be families experiencing income insecurity?
Well, students living in families that are experiencing, yes.
The reason I ask is, I think it would be beneficial to see a bullet there specifically naming a group of students who are struggling with homelessness, because that is another group that has an abysmal record when it comes to mental health and that we, as a board, need to do an extra job to support. And when it says students experiencing income insecurity, I worry that students who are struggling with homelessness are just going to sort of disappear into that group, and I'm wondering if you have any thoughts.
No, we wouldn't want to exclude them from that group, they would be subsumed in that group, and we would be looking at them as a separate group within that category. And we are currently engaging in some conversations in terms of what some approaches might be to more effectively support students who are dealing with homelessness. Absolutely. So superintendent Simmons just commented that this list includes some examples, but it's not an exhaustive list.
Do you have an exhaustive list, or is it just as things come up, you can add to it?
We would be adding to it as other groups are brought forward as priorities, yeah.
Okay. All right. I did have a follow-up to something I asked the first time around about dysregulation as it relates to sleep or technology. I have done a little bit of reading, and there are theories that the amount of screen time the kids get is related to their emotional dysregulation. I'm wondering if you, if the board has any thoughts on this, or if the board has any, if the board or if the staff have any thoughts on this?
The impact of screen time on mental health is certainly a factor that we're concerned about in many different, in many different ways. Certainly, sleep and then resulting dysregulation is part of that. Another part of it is its impact on social relationships and also family relationships. So we are looking at how best to build knowledge, both amongst our students and also our families, including our educator groups as well, in terms of understanding the impact of excessive screen time on mental health.
If I might add, also, you may recall, Mr. Chair, last year through the speaker series, there was a session specifically around screen time and internet use and that kind of thing. So it is a topic of conversation for the district and out there in the community as well.
All right, thank you. That was all the questions I've written down.
Thank you, trustee Lyra, and we're back to trustee Campbell.
Thank you, and come hell or high water, this will be my last segment. Thank you. I guess a general comment suggestion is that, going back to the KPIs, we look perhaps at the outcomes which have been suggested, right? So, which are great outcomes sets. So one is improved staff wellbeing. Well, that's not in our KPIs, right? The improved access to culturally responsive mental health services, did we do that? Can we show that? That's not in the KPI, right? So in fact, we have some great outcomes listed, but we don't have matching KPIs for a lot of them. So with respect to that last note, I'll go back actually to the previous report this evening, the Indigenous one. Improving wellbeing, it suggests on Folio 66 that there were a number of referrals during the 2018-2019 school year to several community agencies under the wellbeing and achievement heading. And a waiting list had to be established, and we could not, they could not meet the demand for support. So, and that's, certainly, there's a great cultural sensitivity strain through this, so I sort of reading these reports together in that regard. So did we improve that situation, right? Is there, what's the waiting list for community partner supports? Is it lessened, right? So in a sense, if we're basically saying we want to ensure effective collaboration with community partners to ensure a seamless circle of care as a system outcome desired, well, did we move towards that? Are there gaps? We have increased understanding of service gaps in the community, did we do that? Did we address them, right? So anyway, I'm just saying that I'm not seeing these in the KPIs, right? That's all I'm saying, and suggesting maybe we go through the very good outcomes list and seeing what we can do to find matching KPIs that are practical and feasible and, you know, whatever, that's all. And I will suggest bottom of Folio 10, it just bugs me, it says improved mental health and wellbeing for vulnerable students, and if they're sent in on this. And, oh, yes, and just one last thing, are there areas in our, that we could potentially target usefully? Because I noticed in the leading mentally healthy schools document on the SMHO website, it suggests targeting grade six and transitions to high school, I believe, is one of the things that could potentially be usefully targeted. I don't know. So I guess what I'm wondering is, do we have a sense of a district where priority impact areas or grades that we could lavish extra attention on? Could that usefully perhaps be part of the strategy? It was just a suggestion.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. Any response?
Certainly. Just to comment on the KPI piece and looking at some more specific indicators, when we take a look at our action plan, the specific strategies would be indicated in the action plan, and there are success indicators associated with those strategies. So to your example of how many referrals, do we have a more streamlined process in place? When that becomes part of the action plan, then that would be a success indicator.
All right, trustee Lyra, did you have a question?
Yeah, something jumped to mind. I remember when I was sitting on CAC that there is a long waitlist for students who need to access evaluations from professional staff. I'm wondering if this document has any plans to help address the waitlists for board-certified diagnosis?
So this particular plan doesn't address the waitlist for assessment for learning issues. The issue around assessment for mental health needs would be prioritized a little bit differently. So certainly, there are minimal waitlists, depending on the nature of the concern that is raised. So for example, if we have a student who is experiencing suicidal ideation, there would be no wait for an assessment, it would be done immediately when that information is brought forward to us. For other kinds of issues, we might be doing the assessments in-house, so our psychology staff might be doing the assessment that would lead towards a diagnosis, or we might refer to one of our community partners. We have a system in Ottawa, which is called CAPA, which is Choice Appointment Partnership Agreement, which has reduced the waitlist for mental health assessments and mental health interventions significantly within the region as more and more of the community agencies have signed on to that. So at this point, the waitlist for mental health assessments are actually quite short in the Ottawa, in the Ottawa region.
Do you know what the waitlist for midterm counselling is in the Ottawa area? Because let's say we have a high school student who has been, decided that they need like mid-to-long-term counselling, what's the waitlist for that?
That's a difficult question to answer because it would depend on which agency and the age of the child, or if the family is looking at some kind of private counselling. So the waitlist can vary very much.
Let's assume that they're not looking for private counselling, because that's expensive, and let's assume that they're in high school, because that's where the majority of students who are experiencing suicidal ideation are coming up.
So a student over the age of 12, so between the ages of 12 and 19, they would be eligible for services through the Youth Services Bureau. Youth Services Bureau has a walk-in clinic, and students can, with their parents, walk in and receive service on, I believe it's Tuesday and Thursdays, and so they simply have to show up, and they would be able to access the services for that initial appointment. And then based on the presentation, they would be either followed up with immediately or possibly referred to another service.
So I'm aware of the Youth Services Tuesdays and Thursdays Walk-In Clinic on Carling. My understanding is that is short-term counselling, they'll see you up to four times, and then you need to get transferred to somebody more long-term. And I worry about all of these community partnerships that we have, my understanding is that there- is that there are waitlists for almost all of them and that you can't get access to a mid to long-term counsellor in under six months.
Trustee Lyra, did you have a question about the mental health strategy?
My question is, if we're relying so much on community partners and not doing as much in-house, if our community partners are all backed up and waitlisted, what can we do in-house to support the students who need it? Or is there anything we can do in-house instead of working, relying on community partners to cover these needs?
I'm sorry if I led you to believe that we rely on our community partners. We do much of our work in-house, we do work in collaboration with our community partners and do refer, but that doesn't mean that we don't do work in-house as well. We have psychological services available to every one of our schools, we have social work services available to each of our schools, and we have Child and Youth Counselors, itinerant EAs in all of our secondary schools, as well as community partners who come into our schools and provide service to our students. So we very much do the assessment work and short-term intervention with students in-house as well.
But we don't do mid to long-term counselling? We do intervention if they're suicidal, but we don't do long-term mental health counselling support?
When we think about what's best practice in the world of mental health intervention, psychotherapy at this point is most effective if it's done in the short term or midterm, particularly when we're talking about an adolescent population. Most psychotherapeutic approaches that are effective with adolescents tend to be between four and eight sessions. Complex cognitive behavior therapy at this point would be considered 12 sessions, so it's still fairly short-term.
And there's no substantial waitlist for that in-house?
Correct.
I'm going to say less than two weeks.
It really depends. I mean, I can't give you a specific waitlist per school. It really depends on a number of factors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dr. Dueschner, and thank you very much, Superintendent Simmons, for that very, very good discussion that we had. I really, really appreciate it and I think the trustees benefited and everyone benefited from the discussion. Thank you. So moving on to information items, item 8.1, report from OspA representatives, and there is no report from OspA representatives this evening. Moving on to 8.2, new ministry initiatives. Director, are there any new ministry initiatives this evening? All right, then moving on to item 8.3, OspA update. Trustee Scott, any updates from OspA?
No new minutes and I'm no longer the OspA trustee, trustee Jenikins is.
Oh, trustee Jenikins.
There are no updates for tonight.
Thank you very much, trustee Jenikins, my apologies. I'd like to point out on Folio 81, the long-range agenda of the Committee of the Whole, provided for your information. Item 10, is there any new business? Oh, trustee Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very quickly, given the several provincial surveys slash questionnaires that are out there with regard to the Ontario budget and the opportunities for input, and given that OspA is also seeking member board input with regard to what our budget priorities, what we see as the priorities should be, as something that they would consider incorporating into the OspA submissions to any of these processes, I would very much appreciate it if trustees would consider identifying, say, three top priorities for education funding and emailing them to me as soon as possible so that I can consider an appropriate response within the context of any OspA discussions. And also with a view, if we did decide we wanted to do an institutional response for the consultation that ends on the 11th of February, it would be possible to put something together and bring it to board next week, which means I need to have some sense of priorities before Friday. But the thing is that our Advocacy Strategy Committee met last fall. Subsequent to the discussion, Sue Baker developed a matrix for us. We had very little response from trustees with respect to modifying the matrix, refining the matrix, and we haven't had a meeting of the Advocacy Strategy Committee since the organizational meeting in December. And of course, we no longer have the former chair of that committee, trustee Braunavon. So I would hope that trustees will put their heads together and think, because sometimes it's really worthwhile participating in some of these broad ministry consultations, sometimes not so worthwhile. So I think if we have some priorities and can identify them, at the very least, we might wish to put in a succinct submission. Thank you.
Trustee Schwartz?
Just on that point, trustee Scott, I think it would be helpful for purposes of consulting with fellow trustees to perhaps recirculate, and I'm looking back at staff, recirculate that matrix that Sue Baker put together. I think that might help foster some conversation.
As I recall, that was a shared Google Doc, so you probably still have access if you look at your Google Docs on your iPad.
Again, if it could just be recirculated as a link, perhaps, like, I don't have time to go searching for stuff.
We will take that under advisement.
Yeah, I think it just would be helpful if it's recirculated.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.